June fourteenth, two thousand twenty one, Finance Committee of the whole budget hearing. To order, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Adams.
Here.
Ally. Yeah. Bean.
Here.
Belltrandy.
Here.
Burns.
Here.
Figgy.
Here.
Flaherty.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Matthews Kane.
Here.
Mello.
Here.
Morganelli.
Here.
Oniski.
Here.
Sullivan.
President.
Thank you. First on the agenda tonight is the airport. I see Director Wolenbrog is here. Would you like to give us a brief overview of your budget before I turn it over to the councilors for questions?
That would be a great. Chairman Figgy, if able, I'd like to share a brief PowerPoint presentation that I have. Peter, can I share my screen? Can you see my screen?
Not yet.
Has it gone through yet?
No. We're still full screen here. Madam City Clerk, let the record go. Dan Alley has arrived.
Okay.
It's working now, Chris.
All right, great.
There it is.
Thank you again to the Finance Committee and the City Council this evening for the opportunity to present on our Airport Department budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Just kind of a brief overview for the city councilors. As a reminder, the airport encompasses over twelve hundred acres of land, over three and a half million square feet of airfield pavement. We have over six hundred fifty airfield lights and eighty-five signs. We also have over six hundred acres of grasslands, and all of this area is maintained by a very dedicated, passionate staff of seven full-time individuals within the Airport Department. In two thousand nineteen, the Aeronautics Division completed a statewide airport economic impact study that highlighted over twenty-one hundred direct and indirect jobs with an economic output of over two hundred thirty-six million dollars per year. One thing that I'd like to stress this evening is that the Airport Department, working as a team and working with the city, were trying to leverage as much FAA and Mastod funding for infrastructure projects. So for this upcoming fiscal year, from a FAA standpoint, we're trying to leverage over four hundred forty thousand dollars for noise compatibility study update and land reuse plan. Also, environmental assessment for runway one five, obstructions and other airfield improvements. We're hopeful that there will not be local share. However, in the budget, we are covering local share on it. We're waiting for FAA to provide further guidance about the possibility of no local share. Congress included in a resolution for the infrastructure improvements that no local share be assessed to airports for AIP grants this coming year. We also were able to leverage four point seven million dollars this year with the Governor's Military Task Force for a new taxiway and apron project, no local share. Also want to share with the council that this year we've been able to leverage over two hundred thirty-two thousand dollars from Mastod Aeronautics for Airport Safety and Maintenance Program, and I would like to sincerely thank the council and other departments that worked with us to make this happen. So thank you for your support for some local share requirements on this this past year. Also, these requests came in late in the year, so I know that, you know, several of these we had to ask for immediate consideration. I appreciate that. One thing that did come up recently is, as we were going through our projects, projects that were older than than four years old, there were contracts that were not officially closed out. There was over a hundred fifty-three thousand dollars that had been encumbered in local shares for these previous projects, and these were projects that, like I mentioned, were older than four years. And those now, that money is now going to be applied towards free cash for this fiscal year. So we worked closely with Vicki, the auditor, Vicki Morrow, our city auditor, to make this happen. So I just wanted to share that with the council. The specific highlights for our budget, obviously, the key items are personnel line item. Within that light item, we are looking to add one more full-time motor equipment operator to our team. Previously, the Airport Department had four individuals in the maintenance. Several years ago, they did not fill a position, and it had been kept at three. We're looking to fill that position. Our overtime number of sixteen thousand dollars is remaining the same. Purchase of services and our supplies have gone up a little bit, and specifically because of equipment vehicle repairs. As you may recall, we had asked for additional funding early this year. We have old snow removal equipment, large Oshkosh vehicles that are costly to repair and find parts. Also, our purchase of supplies, the biggest item there is our two sweepers. They have broomheads on them. They're ten thousand dollars each. They need to get replaced. We also have another light item for airfield pavement markings, fifty thousand dollars. It's something we need to continue to keep up to make sure we meet our FAA requirements on the airfield. So with that, Chairman Figgy, that's a quick overview of the airport budget, and certainly will answer any questions you or the council may have.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have any questions from the council? Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, Chris, thanks for the, thanks for the great work and for the good report. Just wondering, ballpark, I don't need to know all the specifics, but I know we always talk about, we've, you and I have talked about it for, you know, probably close to two decades, of making you an enterprise fund. In general, how much revenues did the airport generate? And how close are we to seeing that happen?
Sure. So if you combine the airport, direct income, the fees that that come in, as well as the property taxes that are collected from our aviation tenants, it's approximately a little over a million dollars. As you know, this past year, we had an emergency runway repair that was over three hundred thousand dollars. If it had not been for that project this year, we would have cleared a little over two hundred thousand dollars this year with combined direct fees, as well as the property taxes collected. Unfortunately, we're going to be about a hundred thousand short this year, depending how we finish up this last month of June on our revenues, but we're still about a hundred thousand short based on this year's numbers.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Counselor Adams, and then Counselor Oniski.
Yeah, Chris, also thank you for the great job you're doing up there. Just one quick question, Chris. I know there was an issue a few months ago with somebody getting on the runway. Is that, are you have anything in your budget to stop that from happening again, or could you, I don't want to get off too far off subject, but is security something that you guys control or something that the air guard controls?
It's a cooperative effort, working with Airport, Air National Guard Security, as well as West Hill PD. So we have done some enhancements already, and we're also working with Mastod Aeronautics on a enhancement of our security system at the airport. They're looking to do a pilot program starting July one, and we're one of four airports that are in the queue for that. So that that certainly will help. The good thing when we use Mastod Aeronautics security funding, it's at a hundred percent. There's no local share. So it is a collaborative effort, and we have made improvements already, and we're hoping that we'll be able to participate in this program and further enhance our systems.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Oniski?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, I want to thank you and your team for really working hard. You've got a great airport, collecting a lot of money, a lot of federal money, a lot of state money with actually very little local share, and, you know, adding a person to the budget, I think is reasonable. I don't see how your team could actually get that airport in the shape it's in with only seven people. That's, that's amazing considering all the, all the land, all the stripings, all the markings that are on there. So I, you know, I'm going to vote for it. I think it's, it's well worth it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Alley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, you, and you, you guys are doing an amazing job. As part of the conversation as far as the land reuse, the land, it's under the city, but are some of the conversations about things that that land could possibly be used that could benefit the airport, or is that like, is that off the table?
No, we're, we're looking to start the land reuse plan when we receive the grant from the FAA, which we hope we'll get by August. Certainly, that land was purchased with FA funds, so there's certain restrictions on what can be done on that land. But certainly, we're going to look at every opportunity to reuse that land and certainly try to be, find those uses that are compatible with the residential areas there. So we look forward to working on that, and I know that several of the councilors, including you, Counselor Alley, are very interested in this, and we look forward to working with you. Right now, we're just waiting for the grant so we can launch the consultant to start the work and start our public meetings on this.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro temp. Thanks, Chris, for being here tonight and for the PowerPoint. I have one, one quick question. On the, the supplies, can you explain, you know, what, what kind of supplies, it's not a big ticket item on your, in your budget, but I noticed that it, you know, it went from, it nearly tripled from last year. I'm just wondering what that, what that's for.
Sure. Well, the, the big part is, so typically, supplies cover, you know, vehicle supplies, airfield lighting supplies, the fuel to operate our vehicles, both diesel and auto gas. But the big item on there were the sweeper, the broomheads that go on these sweepers. We have large sweepers that have twenty-two foot broomheads, and they have wafers in there. They're metal and poly, and they wear down over a period of time. They, they haven't bought those in probably two years, two or three years at the airport. So this year, we had, we didn't have a lot of snow, but we had a high frequency of snow. And unlike maybe on a, on a roadway, we have to start sweeping pavement when we get a half inch of snow. So these sweepers are used. We had a lot of, a lot of snow events frequency-wise this year, so they need to be replaced, and that's twenty thousand dollars alone, right there for those broomhead replacements.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And just, you know, I don't see any major issues with your budget, but because of the format that the Finance Committee has chosen, where the public really doesn't have a chance to ask city councilors questions after the department heads present the budget, I'll be voting no on this for that reason, because the taxpayers don't get to, don't get to ask me any questions after the fact. So there's, there's going to be a vote tonight, and I just want you to know why I'm voting no.
Okay.
Counselor Burns, then Mello, then Flaherty.
Evening, Chris. Thanks again, like my colleague. Thanks for all you and your team does up there. Quick question. The, um, the Air National Guard is supposed to be put in the gate. I see I go by Bradley quite often. I see theirs are in. Is there any update on that? Because I know you were talking about putting in a traffic signal.
Yes, so there, there is movement on it. The City of Westfield Engineering Department, Mark Crisati, Jeremy Siegel, we've been working with Mast DOT and the Air National Guard. This new gate is being, is, part of it is going to be funded through the Governor's Military Task Force. Over four million dollars is being programmed next fiscal year, this upcoming fiscal year in two thousand twenty-two for the gate improvements. Concurrent with what the guard is doing, Mast DOT is looking to do a major roadway project from the Pike to North Road, and we're trying to line up some timings so that we're not, you know, gain some efficiencies when they actually do the Air National Guard section, which will be located just north of Airport Road, where the existing Army Guard roadway goes in. But we are working on it. It's very early. It's conceptual designs right now. It's not even thirty percent design. But there is a lot of, there needs to be collaboration, and, and we're working on that right now. In fact, we had a call last week with Mastod, Mark Crisati, myself, and Jeremy Dugan, who's a civil-based engineer from the one oh fourth. So we are talking about this and looking to move it forward.
Thank.
Counselor Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, thank you for the presentation. I was looking back through my documentation, and what I wasn't sure of is, is there an expected local match for that gate work? And if so, ballpark, what is that? And is that in this budget, or is that something that we just need to keep an eye out for later? And thank you.
Sure, no problem, Counselor Mello. There is no local match for the gate improvements. That is a hundred percent funded through the Governor's Military Task Force, so there will be no local share for that part of the project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pro temp. Thanks, Chris, and your team for everything you're doing up there. I know it's a lot of work, and you are short-staffed. And I support the adding of the person up there and understand the economic impact of the airport. I, like Counselor Morganelli, are going to be a no vote tonight, and not necessarily because of your budget. I don't feel I'm ready to make suggested budget cuts. At this time, I have targets in mind for the entire city, and I want to wait until after I see all the other department presentations before I make budget cut recommendations. I think that's fair. I think I'd also like to hear what the Finance Committee wants to recommend before we vote to approve or deny any particular line item in the budget. I'm very concerned about the long-term outlook of the city and some of the priorities in this budget. I'm also very concerned that taxes, as of right now, are estimated to go up two and a half percent in the mayor's proposal, and we're taking about two million dollars out of free cash, which we shouldn't be doing to cover our operating expenses. So because of those concerns, I'm going to be a no tonight. It has absolutely nothing to do with you or your team. It has to do with the method that's going on here and my desires with regard to the budget and the future of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselors Matthews Kane.
Thank you, President Pro Temp. And Chris, thanks for the presentation and for being here tonight. I just have a quick question about the bathroom renovation. There's a nine thousand dollar bathroom renovation. Can you explain why you're choosing to do that?
Sure. So as you're aware, we have a public facilities that are used by aeronautical aviation customers, as well as non-aeronautical. We have an airport restaurant. But we have a general public restroom downstairs that has not been, very little has been done since two thousand seven, when the building was built. So we're looking to replace the dividers in the stalls, as well as the countertop that have been damaged over time. It just needs to get done, so.
Any other counsel for the first time? Counselor Flaherty for the second time.
Thank you. And because you just asked about the bathrooms and mentioned the restaurant, is the current restaurant paying market rent, and are they honoring their commitment for hours open to serve the airport?
Yes, they are paying their rent. They're paying more to get ready at this time, and they are open basically seven days a week. They're actually exceeding what was originally proposed, except in one area, and that one area is breakfast. The commission, last year during COVID, basically granted a request not to have breakfast. The commission is going to be looking at that once in the next couple of months. We've talked about that. So that's the only part of the lease agreement that the restaurant is not meeting at this time is the breakfast on the weekends. And they're, we're looking to have them do a brunch, but other than that, they're open up seven days a week, and they're doing very well, bringing in a lot of people, not only aviation, flying clubs from all over New England and northeast, but also the communities coming up and bringing the general public up to the airport and giving people a chance to experience aviation firsthand, hopefully getting some kids interested in, in becoming involved in aviation as they grow up, so.
Thank you. Anything, any other questions from the council? Counselor Matthews Kane.
Mr. President Pro Temp, I move approval of the airport's budget as presented.
Motion's in bay. And second, any further discussion? Before we vote, Chris, I too would like to commend you and your staff for a job well done. Saying no discussion, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Adams.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Sorry. Yes.
Belltrandy.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chairman Figgy, and appreciate the support of the city council. Thank you.
Appreciate all you do and your presentation. Thank you. Next on the agenda is what I call the ID Department, which does not exist because it's called the Tech Center. My apologies to the, my fellow councilors for that misrepresentation that you'll find as one one five five. Is Ms. Bernash here from the Tech Center?
Yes, I am.
Thank you for the material beforehand, and would you like to go over that for the council at this time?
Certainly. Would you like me to share it, or would you, on the screen, or would you like me to just discuss it in general?
I'll tell you, we got the techies tonight, so we might as well share it.
Okay. Peter, can I share? Okay. Mine's not a PowerPoint. Mine's just a PDF.
With bullets.
With bullets. So this is a document that I shared in regards to the Technology Center. It's just a quick little, quick and dirty two-page document that tells you what our responsibilities are, some of the highlights from this past fiscal twenty-one year, and going forward, what we're planning for fiscal twenty-two. So over the course of twenty-one, we coordinate, we're, it's still in the process of doing this because it runs from January to December. It's the project that everybody loves, is year two of the Commonwealth Connect Cybersecurity Grant Training. I will say that I just received the quarterly report card from the state, and we tested at one percent fish proof, fish prone, and the state average was two percent, so it is doing something. And as the mayor will attest, I bring this up at every department head meeting, that we, we have to be the cheerleaders out there to get more people to take the training. Along those lines, because of the pandemic, we saw our service desk requests increased dramatically. Last year, we were on average about six thousand help desk requests. This year, we're at seventy-three hundred, and in addition, we have almost a thousand repair requests for Chromebooks for the one-to-one program that the students at the, the schools. Those range from anywhere from broken screens to broken keyboards, to restore operating systems, to missing power cords, but that's, that's pretty much what it was. So we had almost eighty-five hundred requests out there, just shy of that, over eight thousand, I can say. We installed monitored UPS units in all buildings, so they are monitored. So when power goes out, or when the batteries start to fail, we get network alerts to it. We used E-rate funding to get this. We applied for it last year. It was a forty percent purchase, meaning that, that the E-rate program covered sixty percent of this. So it was a savings of over sixty thousand dollars for these thirty units. We did order some for City Hall. Unfortunately, we had to pay the going rate for that, but it was still some savings. Upgraded essential infrastructure equipment. We worked with our purchasing agent. Due to the pandemic, we were able to upgrade some of this equipment through the COVID process. What ended up happening was some of the equipment was failing due to the increased need, the increased draw on it. We were able to install it, restore it, get it upgraded, and we're set for the next five years. The main city firewall was replaced as well. That happened last summer, and no one batted an eye. It went very smoothly, knock on wood. One project that was finally completed recently was the city email migration and training of the employees. That was postponed due to COVID. I hate keep saying due to COVID, but with all the extra work and with everything else going on, it just never was a good time. So we finally just went and went ahead and did it last April, and we are up and running. I think we're still going to have some additional training going on, and the project will probably expand a little going forward. Basically, the rest of it, spam filter archive email protection system, that's all in, in accordance with the city email project. We're upgrading our antivirus this year, and one project that we're working on is the VoIP phone system. We are installing new phones, intercoms and centralized clocks in the schools. This year, we targeted middle school and intermediate school. It was approximately a hundred and twenty-five phones each into both schools, and next year, and it's in the budget for fiscal twenty-two, is we are going to be going forward with Highland and with the high school, and the school is using some of its ester funding for that, but my team would be the one coordinating it. The, we've also replaced phones in City Hall, in the city and school administrative offices. We expanded security cameras. We installed and managed a public safety VPN, so those are for the cruisers and the ambulances to connect securely to our CAD-based systems back here. It is a monitored and secure system working with the state. We've coordinated the, the effort to support the school one-to-one initiative, which was an additional four thousand plus Chromebooks out there for one-to-one. We had, at any given point in time, we had over five thousand Chromebooks out there in student and staff hands. My team did all the remote support and all the onsite support for that as well. Insta, we installed the specialized software to help manage this and to record all the issues that they might have with it, and we also passed out hotspots for home connectivity for staff and students with poor internet access. And over the course of the year, we adjusted our support team to provide the remote support. Thank you very much for authorizing the, authorizing the additional positions for my department. We were able to hire the full-time technician position. What ended up happening is that our part-time person ended up transitioning over to full- What ended up happening is that our part-time person ended up transitioning over to full-time. We still have that part-time position out there, but it was not refilled afterwards. Finally, going, looking forward to fiscal twenty-two, we are in the process of starting our city website refresh. We have three specialty subsites, police, economic development. And now we are adding in the airport. They will be, they will look very similar to our current sub, our current website, but they will have their own. My department manages all that for them. We, we're looking at expanding multi-factor authentication for all city resources. Right now, we have all the key players, all key players, mainly my team, a lot of department heads that use multi-factor authentication. We'd like to push that out to all employees, not just, not just the people that have sensitive information out there. We are looking at additional disaster recovery solutions for the continuity of government. There are too many people around us getting hacked. I heard this morning that Microsoft, or not Microsoft, sorry, McDonald's was just a victim of ransomware. So it's out there. It's, it's a matter of time. So we are looking into protecting our city as much as we can. We are looking for a, we will be installing new switches for City Hall. We will upgrade the switches that are about seven or eight years old out there. Continued installation of those network monitored UPSs. We will be undergoing Munus upgrade. That is what has been planned. It will be happening just about a year from now in the April timeframe to bring us up to the latest version. You'll hear more later about this from Nina when she does her presentation, but there is a potential regionalization project for public safety communications. We'll be working with them to combine the CAD and radio systems connectivity. We're expanding our cybersecurity grant to the student population this fall. We're looking for some teachers to volunteer with us. And we have two more school projects, the virtual school configuration, the new school technology design. We are also increasing our internet as a city, city and school to ten gigs come September. That is also going to be partially funded by the E-rate funding. We pay the forty percent of our share that's based off of a calculation that E-rate makes. And eventually, we will be applying for a replacement of all our city and school building Wi-Fi. That we are going to be evaluating it this fall. We will be applying for it with E-rate funding, so that would start in fiscal twenty-three. So those are, those are some of the things on our plate. There are certainly many other options out there and projects pop up every day, it seems. So I just have a quick summary of the changes to the budget on the second page. Basically, the biggest changes in my budget this year are in personal services. We are looking, so budget year of fiscal twenty-twenty-one, I had ten, I originally started with eight people. And then you auth, you authorized me for the two additional hires that started in the March timeframe. One was in March, one would have potentially have started in April, which had increased my budget a little then. I'm asking this year for two additional positions, an assistant manager to help run all these projects and another technician to help support everything. That and in addition to the staff moving to the union brings my budget this year up as far as salaries go. Up until now, my staff had all been personal agreements. The, the union and my staff worked together and we're trying to get them on a standardized pay scale. The operational and maintenance part of my budget has only gone up slightly. You heard in the assessors' presentation that they did get, they did take back their vision software. What happened with vision was in the March timeframe, last year in March timeframe, they needed to upgrade their software. And unfortunately, their server, their physical server would not support the newest release. So the question was, was whether they wait until after we upgraded our infrastructure to get the new, to get to the new software or to move to the cloud-based version. Due to COVID, the company had given them six months free on the cloud. And at the end of the six-month period, they decided to stay with the cloud-based version. So the software and ended up moving over to the assessors' department because the assessors would be doing other cloud-based software. And since there's no physical hardware for us to maintain anymore, it made sense to move it over to their budget. So my budget would have been slightly higher, however, we moved it over to the assessors' department. So just a six-year comparison where we stand, my budget has been pretty consistent. I've tried to level fund every, as, as requested by the mayor every year. In blue is the personal services and orange is the operations and maintenance part. I, there are increases in my budget, but we try to keep them as consistent as possible. I try to look forward. I do do five-year planning for my team and for all our projects. Just, this is just an overall view of the budget combined. It did have a little dip. Most of our dips come from changes in personnel, not necessarily changes in our operations piece of budget. So that being said, I can come back and I can talk about slight changes. I did talk about the full-time salary change in general. And I can talk about the purchases services change in our purchases services. That's the one account that is going up slightly. It's, it's not going up tremendously, but it is going up slightly. That's the one that the assessors came out of, but unfortunately, that was offset by the fact that we are in year four of our contract for our radio system maintenance. And in year four, the warranty on the microwave expires and I have to buy the extended, the extended warranty for the microwave system, which is thirteen thousand dollars. So it almost offsets it. The other parts of it, Munus is always, there's always a slight increase in Munus. And this year, we are getting five new leases of copiers that are coming off lease. I hold all the leases for the copiers. These were leases that were held by departments prior to my department taking them over. So I'm going up to approximately thirty copiers that my department is leasing on a five-year lease schedule. And as such, we're also getting their, their click counts when they use the copiers. We have that, their usage charges. That, that for the most part is, that's the biggest chunk. If you look at my budget from last year, the comparison, we did do some movement this year in the budget, not tremendous amounts. We did have an emergency situation where we had to buy a switch to support the increased internet for the school department for their one-to-one system to get the, to get the information out. The teachers being in the classrooms were projecting out their Google meets and it required the higher internet access. And we moved some of the money there. We moved some money into replacement equipment because we had to replace switches here and there.
Thank you, Lenore. Any questions from the council? Counselor Bean, then Counselor Flaherty.
Great. Thanks, Lenore. I appreciate the time and effort. And your, your knowledge of the budget is impressive. I, I know there's a ton of moving parts in the, the amount of departments that you interact with is probably everybody, if I'm not mistaken. So with that being said, I mean, historically, we've always underfunded you. And even today, we're underfunding you, even with the additions of, of, of people. And I mean, I look at just the cybersecurity piece, you could probably spend your entire budget on that alone. Being in some of the institutions that I've worked in and for now, it's daunting and it's constant. I'd like to see more money to your budget. I, you know, it's, I don't say that very often, especially with, in this situation, but it's, I, I just think we're underfunding you. People are one thing, but also the, the software and hardware that we've really have, we, the whole city has been behind the eight ball for years. With that being said, and I appreciate it, you know, you do a lot and, and I appreciate that. I, my only question is, and obviously I have no cuts, and I, I would add money if I could. What kind of involvement do you have with the Westfield Gas and Electric now and Whip City Fiber? Obviously, we have a new general manager. I'm not going to speak to the relationship we've had throughout the years up until now, but when you start talking about internet service and Wi-Fi and, and that connectivity, even on the security side, have we had any discussions with them? And if not, how can we open that door and move forward with some of those discussions?
So I, I work very well with the, with Whip City Fiber. I talk, touch bases with John Leary and Rich Carnell over there. Right now, what we are getting from them as far as services are our internet connection and our building-to-building connection. What we have, and we go out to bid every three years, we have to unfortunately, because it is for, for E-rate purposes on the school side, we have to do a bid process. And since this, the JNE is not on state contract, we have to do that. So we do go out to bid every three years for that. Building-to-building connections, they provide us a municipal network, a municipal ring that connects all of our buildings. We have about twenty-one sites connected total to our fiber ring. They also provide our internet connection back to the tech center. Everyone comes back to the tech center and then goes out. They have been consistently the lowest bidder. And, and believe me, there have been times when they have not been the lowest bidder. And we've worked with them closely to see what we could do for the next time, because obviously purchasing regulations, I can't go back and forth with them. I have to only deal with the lowest ones. But, but they have been our provider since I've started and I've been here for twenty-four years. So they've been our provider since then, and I've seen it come a long way since we started. They do provide internet feeds and you're going to see that when Peter brings up his peg, his peg budget. It, it is paid for there. However, it, there is a reimbursement from E-rate for the services to the schools. There is a sixty percent reimbursement there. And that goes to the school department and they use that towards technology purchases for, for their infrastructure. That's what we use that for. But
Just a follow-up, if you don't, it just might, and also I know, I mean, they're, they've opened up maybe throughout the years, they've had those fifty thousand dollar grant thing, you know, like, you know, might be low-cost lighting for certain things. Have we taken advantage of any, any of that on the technology end? Have they ever been open to doing some projects at that cost level? Or are we always subject to the bid laws that you just stated?
We are, for the most part, we are subject to the bid laws. I work with, with our purchasing, with Tammy very closely on that. We have reached out to the JNE. We do do certain things, the cameras around town, some of the security projects we've done. We've reached out to them. They've helped us with wiring in one of our schools when we had a Wi-Fi expansion in one of our schools. And I know that they do work with Tammy for the lighting situations in this, in the facilities. They work with Tammy and Brian on that. I don't know what they get from that because that's not my realm.
That's outside of your stuff. Yeah.
Right. But I do know that we do work with them. We don't work with them too much on the technology side because the biggest, the, the biggest resource for us is just the connectivity piece. And we've worked with them. They worked with us this year with the school department to connect up the big white church on the green for the virtual school. We will be working with them again as, as needed for additional connectivity for some of the other buildings.
Great. Thanks, Lenore. I appreciate it.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President Pro Temp. And, and thanks, Lenore, and you, for you and your team. It's been a hell of a year, I'm sure, for you guys. And I know you've done a lot. I too, like Brent, believe that this department has been historically underfunded and that every dollar we spend in your department saves money in other departments in many ways. So I think we should be looking at that. I know you've asked for a developer or a database person in here. I think a developer person might be appropriate too in the future. The more that we can do in-house through your department, the better it is for every department in the city. And if you look at how much time you invested in the schools this year and what the payback is with, for the schools, I think people understand that the, the significant payback there. And we should not be shortchanging this department. I believe we can do so much more. I know you have quite a list there and I actually understand everything that's on your list. I'm probably one of the few on the screen here to do, because I do this stuff every day. And I agree with many of your assessments and choices. But I think if I sat down with you for a long lunch, we could probably come up with some really great things we could do for the city if we had enough resources. And I know you do that now with your internal staff as well. So I would like to see that expanded in the future, particularly in the area of custom applications that can save other departments time and money. You know, there are so many things that happen in government that you shake your head at and you say, what, that's the stupidest thing I've ever seen. Why are we still doing it that way? We can put a man on a moon, but we can't do this. And there are many things like that. And not only city government, but you know, I have clients in other parts of government as well. And for somebody who's focused on technology, you just shake your head sometimes looking at this stuff and say, how the heck can we justify doing that this way? Because it's so dated and antiquated and time-consuming, you know, and a couple of weeks of developers' time could save hundreds of hours a year per employee for teams of people, like, like people just don't really understand it all. So I, I would have support your budget. I'm going to be a no again. I don't know if you heard me earlier for the reasons why. I want to wait till the process is over and so I can make some suggestions for cut to satisfy my goals of what we should be having for tax increases and the use of free cash and stabilization funds and meeting our long-term obligations and things like that. I will tell you that I just sent an email over earlier today requesting some additions to the budget. And I would be happy to do that on your behalf too, to see where that plays, because I think we, I think I have some offsetting cuts that could be used to transition some money around. I also think we should be charging back some of your services to the departments that receive them. So that it's clear to people how your department's resources are being spent. Like, my guess is over seventy percent of your total budget is related to schools. And I know we see that on the annual report at the end of the year for schools, but we don't see that during this conversation. And then we, you do spend time on some of the enterprise funds that have the ability to charge back for services. And I'd like to make sure that you're one of the departments that does get that charge back so that we can use those enterprise funds to help fund some of our overhead that's not directly related to those particular departments, that indirect cost of operating though. So if you have any suggestions, you may call, maybe after the budget year, we can get together and plan a little bit ahead for next time.
That sounds great, because I know we are working on, one of those projects I just mentioned, we were working on the, for the offsite backup for disaster recovery. And I was planning, once we actually researched it more, because we, we do have offsite backup, we do have redundancy, but there's always that air gap that needs to, basically if, if you have your backup ready, and I'll just try and explain it quickly. If you have the backup, if your primary system gets infected by ransomware, many times your backup gets infected as well. So you restore your backup and then two weeks later, the ransomware comes out again. So we're trying to work on a system that will give us an immutable backup, which we can put offsite in the cloud, offsite somewhere and have an ability to fix it before the ransomware comes back. That's a project we're working on. We've, we've met with a few vendors, but we haven't decided on the, the route that we want to go with it, which is why it's not in my budget this year.
I work with Azure and AWS on a regular basis and I'm familiar with those. And AWS is really a great option. I know a lot of the high-end financial companies and banks are using AWS for that, and it is fairly cheap. So it does make Mr. Bezos quite wealthy, but it is still one of the cheapest things out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Counselor Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Temp. Thanks, Lenore, for all the explaining and, and the PowerPoint. I had one question about the the in-state travel and the conference training travel fees. How does that, I see there's two thousand for each of those. And then how does that compare to the last two years? Because, I mean, with COVID, I can't imagine that that there was much of that going on. But can you just relate it to the last couple of years, couple of budgets?
Yes. So the in-state travel is a dollar amount, sorry. Is a dollar amount, sorry. Sorry. So the in-state travel is a dollar amount that we put in there to cover the travel fees if we go to any in-state conferences. We are, we don't budget in the out-of-state account. What we do is we move things over as things happen. So if we were to go to the Munus conference, which I know came up at, in one of the other budget hearings. If we were to go to the Munus conference, we'd be moving the dollar amount into the out-of-state travel for the Munus conference. That is usually somewhere. It, my department does carry the under Munus where it has the PACE, it's planned annual continuing education. It's a five days worth of education from Munus where we can, we can schedule them to give us training either onsite or virtually, like half-day at a time or full day. It also includes three free conference registrations each year. It's approximately anywhere from seven hundred to a thousand dollars to attend. anywhere from seven hundred to a thousand dollars to attend one of these conferences, as far as the registration, depending on when you register. And then we also get an investment assessment every three years, so we're coming up on this year's investment assessment, and so we may, I need to touch bases with the mayor and the administrative team to find out which area we wanna focus on. So, but as a result, long story short, if I traveled to that conference, then I would need that money, that funding, that two thousand dollar funding to, to send someone there or to send someone, you're right, the past couple of years, it was two thousand dollars in that account, that was kind of the blanket amount that we found was the best bet for us in there. Because everything went virtual over the past two years, what we've done is we've moved it sometimes into supplies, sometimes into replacement equipment, we made, took advantage of it to upgrade switches. There, this year we had an emergency upgrade that we needed for an internet switch to provide our internet service in order to support the ten gig connection into us, we had to move it there, so we, we moved that money to where it was most needed. But we were hoping that this year we could have done a little bit of training, but we didn't, so we're hoping next year we'll be able to actually go and do the training.
Thank you very much, and, and just so you know, I, I, I won't be voting for the budget tonight, although I'm in full support of the budget you put together, uh, every year I've seen it, you've done a fantastic job, you and your team, and uh, I'm glad to see you've got some more, uh, staff as well, uh, in your budget and that you're, you're getting that. But I, you know, for the taxpayer, I have to, I have to vote no on these on the way we're doing this, uh, in the city council, because I can't get any feedback from the taxpayers and it's their money. Uh, and you've just presented the budget, and now I, I, I can't, I have to take a vote without getting feedback from the taxpayers first, I hope you understand. But thank you very much for being here tonight and presenting.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other counselors have a question before I ask mine? Lenore, do you see any potential for the ARP funds that are coming down the pike? Those are the federal money that President Biden got for us. I know there's structure and technology are part of the funds that you can spend the money on.
There's always some, there's always some potential for it, I can't guarantee what I can get out of it until I actually sit down and and go through it with, with Tammy and see what we can use it towards. I know that there were, there were restrictions on some of the funding that we received for, for COVID from FEMA and the, the, the COVID funding there. But we will put our heads together and we will utilize as much as we possibly can.
Yeah, because one of the allowable areas is internet. So, that might help.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Um, seeing no questions or cuts, Mr. President Pro Temp, I would move approval of the tech center's department budget as presented.
Okay. Motion been made in second, any further discussion? Roll call, Madam City Clerk, please.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lenore, appreciate all the hard work, give your staff the thank yous from the council, please.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is personnel slash payroll, we'll do personnel first, that's one-one-five-two. Let's see, our Personnel Director, Mr. Bishop, is here. Sorry about that, that's for Professor Figgy, it's one of her students. Mr. Bishop, would you like to give us an overview of the personnel budget, please?
Yes, sir, I would, uh, thank you everybody for being here tonight and for giving me a chance to talk. It's good to see all you on here again, I hope that in the very near future we'll be doing some meetings in person and I get to meet everybody face-to-face after coming on a few months ago. Unfortunately, I do not have any airport runways or internet to talk about, so hopefully this will be quick for you guys. Looking at personnel, there's not a lot of changes moving on, but you will notice that coming on here, we were lacking an Assistant Personnel Director, which is a big addition, I know, to my budget. But the biggest thing that I noticed was not happening within the department is there was no continuity, there was no redundancy, and there was very little support for that position. Taking over for this office after there was only a part-time acting director and before that with the turnover, left a lot of major projects in work, which just hasn't been getting done. And as we're looking to move the department into the future and looking to get these projects done, some of the major things like a new personnel manual, as the current one is about twenty years old, a comprehensive broad trading program for all of our employees that covers anything from FMLA management training, sexual harassment, things along that nature, the major projects will be able to start tackling. The day-to-day running of it will be good, but we can start kind of moving the department forward. In addition to that, the continuing education budget has increased, please keep in mind the continuing education budget is for all departments. This is something I would personally like to see increase drastically for all departments, but obviously it is not my say. This is things for certification and training, if anything from a hoisting class for a public works department or a SHRM certification for somebody that's working in HR personnel, maybe working to get our payroll supervisor payroll certified across all departments, as I, I think personally, this is something that I would like to see in the future increase for each department as we continue to invest in our employees, which only improves our employee base. That being said, um, does anybody have any questions?
Questions for the personnel budget?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, seeing none?
No, I see Counsel Flaherty.
Sorry, my video is off.
Yeah.
So, thank you and welcome to Westfield, I know it's, uh, you've kind of jumped in the deep end here, you, you didn't exactly pick the best time to to start a job, uh, and I appreciate all your efforts. Uh, the continuing education incentive, um, that you mentioned is basically to pay people to cover time when other people go to training, it doesn't actually cover the training itself, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, so, that's something that I think people should realize too, if we want to have more training, we have to find a way to fund all the training classes and then fund their time away from work, um, because of the labor contracts, we can't just take somebody off a shift without filling it back in, as much as you could do that in the private sector, and I see some of you shaking your heads, yeah. In the private sector, you can say, you know what, Thursday's your training day, so you're gonna go train and instead of having eight guys on a shift, you're gonna have seven and you're gonna just suck it up and deal with it. We can't do that here because of the union rules. But I, I do agree a hundred percent that more training is necessary, particularly for department leader training. We are coming up on a year when there's gonna be some significant turnover in department heads and managers, and I, I think as part of our job descriptions, we should require management training and supervision skills before we appoint somebody who just happens to be around the longest, and that's historically how things have worked in the city is you kind of take the person who's got the most years of service and they all of a sudden become the boss. And that doesn't work too well in, in a lot of cases, and I think they should be expected to be trained in how to be a manager and a leader, how to manage budgets, how to handle personnel issues when they come up. So that they're ready to run their department, I, I don't think we should just take somebody who's been around the longest, who has no management skills and then give them that responsibility, so I'd love to see more of that. So I think in, in the future budget years, uh, if you could throw that out there, we get, uh, and a, a list of what you submit, and if it gets cut by the mayor, that's okay. But at least you could give us what you wanna see in your budget, so even if you wanted to double your budget, for example, and you could justify it to us as part of your conversation, that's a good way to have these conversations, because we only have it one time a year. And even if we can't afford it, it gets us thinking in a way that's okay, maybe we should adjust some priorities around in the budget and take care of these important items next year, because like IT, I think adequate training for staff and leadership is critical and has significant payback, so I think we should be making those investments and I'd encourage you to submit it next time, thank you very much, and again, welcome to Westfield.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, any other questions from the council?
With that, um, Mr. President Pro Temp, I move approval of the personnel budget as presented.
Okay. Motion been made in second, any final discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
Well, you got one more there, Mr. Bishop, don't run away.
Sorry about that.
And if I had done, if I would have thought, I would have added severance in there to give you a real three, three for three, but I didn't, so let's go along on payroll.
The majority of our payroll budget besides personnel, you're gonna be looking at our severance budget. Please keep in mind, these are forecasted projections for individuals that have stated their intent to retire. So these numbers are estimated based on what their vacations, they call their payouts going to be at the time of their retirement, when and if they retire. Other than that, along with the personnel numbers that are in there, it's a pretty cut and dry budget, I'm hoping, any questions?
Any questions from the council? Counselor Bean, then Counselor Flaherty.
Yeah, ju- just a quick one, it's really on the vein of, of the DPW director's search, and you know, we, we've had this discussion and you know, back and forth, and it's been a grind. Nobody's fault here, just trying to fill that position alone, and obviously it, we thought maybe it's a, a salary issue or, you know, I mean, it's a weird time, right, in the end. I, looking for your opinion on that, and you know, I mean, we've, we've talked about this as a council throughout the years about, you know, where our salaries sit and you know, those, those averages or means that, you know, are we underfunding ourselves on the salaries, are we overfunding in some areas? You know, I'm sure most people think that we're way over what we should be paying, but the reality is, is that people are not taking these jobs. We've had that DPW position open for quite some time. It's a huge undertaking with all those departments, um, a couple of counselors have talked about, you know, breaking that back out, but this is budget discussion, so we'll, we'll stick to the budget discussions. Where are you with that, you know, obviously, uh, this is a good thing in my book, in, in this particular case, uh, although I'm sure councils will start pointing at me. Being, you know, coming in, coming in from the outside and seeing where we are, you, you know, where, where do you think we are overall? And, um, is there any movement up or down that you suggest in the near future?
Absolutely, thank you, uh, great questions. When it comes to the DPW director, obviously this has been a long haul, um, as many know, we're holding interviews actually later on this evening. That being said, i- it's tough to pinpoint exactly where the shortfall is with finding the proper candidate for that position, I know I've stated to you, Mr. President, that it, it could possibly be a perfect storm. We don't know exactly what COVID has done to the landscape of anything from HR to IT when it comes down to it, it could be that people weren't moving, looking for jobs, it could be that there just weren't enough qualified candidates for what we were looking for. That being said, at the end of the day, with a cursory look, we do have the Massachusetts Municipal Association, they have an HR benchmark list. Basically what this is, is every municipality across the state, they report their job positions and they report their salary ranges for these positions. You're able to actually put in a search of municipalities like us, and you could do kind of a broad thing, we're looking forty to forty-five thousand citizens, we're looking at a budget of about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and forty million dollars per year. It'll shoot out all the municipalities that fall within the range, then you can look up an individual position to see what other municipalities are paying for that position. I will say after looking at that, I would argue that we are underpaid as a staff as a whole. And I believe that a focus moving forward would be to examine that more in depth, maybe do a salary survey, which is another one of those higher-level functions that I would love to tackle, and, and move forward, maybe looking about how we increase that, because it is large amount of turnover for the city. And, and I do believe that they are undercompensated.
So, just to follow up, uh, Mr. Counsel Pro Temp, so i- is it, is it worth doing this by individual department, as far as the study goes, or are you thinking just more department head-based, or are we talking all levels? Or, or, you know what I mean, are we just talking the top jobs, or are we talking anywhere from, you know, the any, any, any employment salary at this point?
I would say at this point, it'd be advantageous to look at every position for the city. It, like I said, it's one of those functions that's kind of been neglected from the HR standpoint. It should have been, it's been maintained and I hope to tackle it soon. But I do think the majority of employees within the city, even on a very small level, um, are undercompensated.
Okay, great.
Now, a big thing, part of that, and, and I'm sorry, is also though to look at our benefits package, I will say that we have a great health and dental program. Uh, and if there, there's anything for the council to be happy about when it comes to benefits, you should absolutely be proud of that. It is a great program, but it's also still very difficult to communicate the worth of that program to our employees. It's tough to tell them that this is what we pay in health and dental insurance for you, when sixty to seventy percent of our employees only use it when they have the flu, or they have to get a cavity filled. So communicating that to them, honestly, some of the directors have actually asked me, so I'm looking into ways to better communicate, to let them know what could be conceived as a monetary value of the benefits package that they do have. Yes, you make this per hour, but on this other end, you're getting this amount paid for you in health insurance, dental insurance, and other options.
Thanks, Robert, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Flaherty?
Yep, thank you, I was gonna follow that same track, because, um, some, some people I, I hear are you know, overpaid for Westfield and the surrounding communities, and, and we seem to have certain jobs that claim to be the best paying in the state in other cases, so, and I also feel that there are some technical jobs or other leadership jobs that are underpaid compared to what the neighboring towns have, comparing us to anything on the other side of four ninety-five really isn't accurate, because we're, we're in a different world out here, our costs of living are lower. So I think you have to, you know, if you're gonna do those searches, it should be, you know, in area code four-one-three for towns of our size, you know, so not Needham and Wellesley and, and those kind of towns. But I do, I do believe there's a mix, there's some that are under and some that are over, and, and depending on the job, we may have to be competitive with Boston, because there aren't that many people that, you know, can apply, and maybe they are working in Boston right now. The benefit package thing, I, I that was on my list of suggestions for you after you got in here a little bit of time, I think every time we send out you know, an end-of-year income statement to employees at around tax time, we should also send out a statement that explains their benefits and then what it costs the city. One of the things I just sent over today that I didn't send to all the councils, because I didn't wanna violate open meeting law, but I did send it to the president and the Chair of Finance and the mayor. It, it looked at some of the benefits, and for those who you don't know, we pay about fifteen thousand four hundred dollars per employee for healthcare in the current year. We pay another seventeen and a half percent in benefits and taxes per employee, and that's a combination of pension, it's about seven and a half percent, long-term OPEB, which is the name of eight percent, one point four-five percent in Medicare. Add all those things up and you're over seventeen percent of payroll in benefits plus fifteen thousand four hundred for health insurance, so it's a significant cost to the city. Um, and I think the employees need to understand that. I think that tax time is probably the right time to do it, I think that's what happens in the private sector, I think every year, there's a year-end review and that happens. We're coming up on the end of the fiscal year and you mentioned severance. One of the reports that we used to get is a severance report that shows the outstanding severance by employee. So that when this year end closes, we know how many days of vacation and sick time and stuff are being carried over. Because I don't think the taxpayer understands that and the employees don't understand the value of that. And I, I think if, if you have time this year and it's in your plans, you know, and, and it may be already in Munis somewhere that we just, you know, we don't know about, but if there's a way to spit out a report that lists the employees and how many days we owe them and what that is in today's dollars, that would be very beneficial. And then historically, um, some of the, uh, labor contracts have a buyout at the end of their time and others don't, like the schools right now, the teachers' union doesn't have a severance buyout. But my belief is that they've changed their behavior and are using their sick time at a more frequent rate than they would in the past when they weren't gonna get the money for it, right, because it's kind of a use it or lose it kind of thing, so I think that would be an interesting study to do too, because one of the things they, they argue with us all the time is they gave up this you know, wonderful severance package, um, in return for other things during negotiations, but I think the reality is it's not as big as number cost as they claim, because people are actually using the days up, so if you could add that to us, that'd be great, and then, um, you know, later in the year, I'll probably talk to you and maybe submit some kind of a motion or resolution to get that year-end report that shows employees all the benefits they're actually receiving, thank you.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Any other, just, any other? Any other, just any other questions for the Personnel Director?
Mr. President Pro Temp, I move approval of payroll's budget as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call Madam City Clerk.
Adams.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Bellchandy.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Biggie.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Bishop, and welcome to Westfield.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Good luck on those interviews. Next item on the agenda is emergency dispatch, which is really public safety communication. That is 1225 in your playbook. Let's see, Nina is here. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Would you give us a brief overview of your budget, please?
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. So Westfield Public Safety Communications is the emergency dispatch center for the City of Westfield Police Department, Fire Department EMS. We are staffed 24 hours a day. We, I have 11 full-time dispatchers when I am fully staffed in the center, not including myself. The 11 full-time dispatchers does include the two supervisors, which we call lead dispatchers. I also have two per diem dispatchers, which you'll see in the budget listed as temporary employees. Two dispatchers work per shift on a minimum. And in 2020, we handled approximately 43,000 calls for service for police, fire and ambulance. My purchase of services budget, I pay for the maintenance contracts for our CAD vendor, which is our computer aided dispatch, which tracks responders and calls for service. I also pay that portion for the police and fire department as well. And then also within that budget line is radio maintenance, recording vendor maintenance, our protocol systems, amongst some other things. And then a big chunk of it, I think about $8,000 is for training classes for the dispatchers. There is one major increase that you will see in my, I believe, capital, the additional capital equipment. And that is for, I'm sorry, or replacement equipment. At the end, that's to upgrade our radio consoles that have not been upgraded in more than five years. So that's $51,000. And even though that is in my budget, that is reimbursable through one of my state 911 grants this fiscal year, which I have already put in for, and I'm just waiting for an award. And I'll take any questions that any counselor has.
Thank you. Questions? Counselor Adams.
Nina, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Thanks for your hard work. Um, what will, and I know doing this thing with Southwick and obviously we haven't gotten there yet. But what does that do with your budget if it does come through or if it doesn't come through anything?
So you mean bringing in Southwick, how that changes my budget?
Yeah.
It will change my budget drastically. So yes, and actually it is for the good. So even though my operating budget and my personnel budget will increase state funding for the incentive portion of the support and incentive grant that I get each fiscal year, that alone is going to increase by more than $700,000 a year. So my grants annually typically come in around $190,000 and that's between three grants. And then those same grants, once this dispatch center regionalizes, will be bringing on just under a million dollars for grant funding. So it'll, it'll change it drastically, yes. And that doesn't even include the development grant that, that I can apply for each year after the, the first time that we get this project rolling, that actually will cover things like my salary, potentially a salary for, for a new tech person in Lenora's department. Southwick's assessment fee for us to be taking over services and, and other things as in transition costs to start up the project and maintain for a couple of years.
Counselor Adams?
Yeah, I certainly want to thank you for, number one, for everything you have done. And I know you're trying to put a budget together and you're also trying to figure out, you know, if everything goes as planned and you're also trying to figure out what the state's going to give you and grant. So I know this is kind of your first time doing something like this, but you've done a wonderful job. We talked about this at length before. So I know there might be some glitches here and there because you don't really know what's going to happen and you're forced to give a budget to us here. So I hope everything goes as planned and I'm sure it will because you've worked very, very hard for the city. So I appreciate everything you have done.
Thank you. I appreciate you saying so.
Counselor Flaherty.
Yep, thank you. And I, I agree 100% with what Counselor Adams said. Thank you very much and thank you to your team. I know it's been one heck of a year for you. And again, you're jumping into the deep end here, coming into the middle of this and by the middle of this crisis. And I, I'm very, very happy to see Southwick moving along. We voted for this years ago when we moved the stuff out of the fire and police. And that was our goal was to have a, you know, a regional dispatch center. We have the technology. We had good staff. And we wanted to do that. And I'm very happy to see this moving along and that it will help reduce the charge to the city in a significant way. And that was the whole goal of doing the regionalization, to provide better services and to reduce the cost of the taxpayers. So thank you very much and congratulations on your efforts.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Mello, then Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. President Pro Temp. And I, I want to agree with the fellow counselors. Nina, thank you very much for all you and your team have done. I'm wondering if I can ask you to please, for the folks at home, speak to the change in the overtime number. I understand they're very well documented how you got there, but could we just speak to that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
So I, in the short of it is I try to average out how many days my employees do get for paid time off and also typically the amount of overtime they work, if they take that overtime instead of money in their paycheck, they take it as comp time. And so I look at the previous year to just average out time off. And then I, I come to a number. So this number is a little bit increased than previous years, but it always typically is because of contractual step increases and raises from the base salary, which increases overtime. And then I know that there typically is a, usually the, the biggest cut out of my budget is from the overtime, but because I get so many grants that it typically supplements it. And so far since I've been running the center, I haven't had to, knock on wood, transfer any money into that overtime account. So we've been able to function with it. And low turnover rates within the, the dispatch center has definitely helped out on the overtime budget hugely, as well as my per diems who work tirelessly, actually, coming in here, working shifts that typically a full-timer would be getting paid overtime for.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Counselor Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thanks, Nina. Again, I, I concur with everyone else that has talked about you and your team and coming up with the budget and and the tough time that you've had doing that. I did want to, I had this similar question as Counselor Mello about the overtime. Can you just explain? Because it's, it's a pretty big number. I mean, when you, when you look at overtime, that's hovering around $100,000. Can you explain how the overtime hours come about in the day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month operations of the dispatch?
Absolutely. So, um, so each dispatcher within my center gets vacation time, personal time, sick time, and then they also get paid comp time if they work in overtime. So instead of getting paid overtime money in their paycheck, they might choose to get comp time, which is paid out at time and a half as well. So if they work an eight-hour shift, they would get 12 hours of comp time. So, so if they build up a, a lot of comp time, they can use it just like vacation time where they take time off. And then also holiday, holiday compensation can be either paid in cash in their paycheck or they can take it as comp time as well. So even though an employee may only get, let's say, 14 days of vacation, they can also take more time off if they build up a lot of comp time, which creates more vacancies within the, the center. The center, because it has to run at two dispatchers per shift. If somebody calls out sick or is using their paid time off, that shift has to be filled with another certified dispatcher with, from my center. So that's where I have, that's why I have averaged out the amount of time off that the whole center would be taking. And that's why, where I come up with the certain amount of hours that I could foresee. Typically on the high end, just to make sure that we're covered, that, that would be vacant within the center that would have to be filled with overtime. But I also do try to fill in a number of per diem hours that could be used against that. And that, that's where I take it away from the overtime budget to save. So yes, this is, this is definitely a, this is a, a high number just to make sure we're covered. But again, like I said, if, if I know that there's going to potentially be a cut in it, I, I can work with that as well as my grants. My grants come in to supplement that as well.
Thank you for the, the explanation on that. And, and just, just so you know, I'm, I'm voting no on the budget tonight, just because the, the public, the taxpayers don't get a chance to relay information to the council after the, each department presents. So we do have a, a budget, budget vote on the whole in a couple of weeks, but individually, I'm voting no on the budgets. It's nothing against your budget in particular. Thank you.
Counselor Oniski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to thank Nina and her team. They're the first first responders. They pick up the calls. They're the people who are talking to someone who's, you know, who's got a problem. I mean, no one calls for good news. Someone's calling at the worst, probably when the worst times of their lives when they call 911. But also pay attention tomorrow and maybe the next day for the LNO meeting that discusses the regionalization. I mean, Nina's done a, a lot of work here. And I mean, there are going to be savings in the hundreds of thousands of dollars every year. You know, th- this budget cost is, is going to be a, a fraction next year. Well, it's actually reimbursable. So you have to put it in the budget and then it gets reimbursed by the state. But there is going to be a ton of savings, which we're going to go over, go over in LNO. So that's just a, a cheap plug for tomorrow's meeting at 5 o'clock, if anyone wants to join. But it, it's really amazing and it's amazing the work that they've, they've done, that Nina's done to put this together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Flaherty, did I see your hand?
Yes, thank you. And I just want to follow up on the overtime question because I think I heard you say that somebody who works eight-hour overtime shift can get 12 hours in comp time. And then that 12 hours in comp time has to be covered by additional overtime, which turns into 18 hours. So is that true or is it, and how do employees choose that instead of getting paid? Like is it something the city should be looking at? Should we be saying, okay, if you work overtime, you have to take it in paid out time? Or is there some real benefit to allowing employees the choice?
So sorry if I misspoke or if I made that confusing at all. So, um, so overtime, the, the essence of overtime is that if you're working anything over than there, I think it's 37 and a half hours per week. They will get paid at time and a half. So they can, they can choose money for that or they can choose comp time. So again, if they work eight hours, they get 12 hours of comp time. But again, they're only using eight hours if they are taking a shift off. So there is a cap to the amount of overtime, which is 200 hours in their union contract that they can, that they can have. So as soon as they reach that 200 hours in their comp bank, they, they can't earn any more af- anything after that. They would have to take it paid out as, as money in their paycheck. But again, we also do have a clause in the contract that states that no more than two people on a 24-hour period, or actually it's, it's a calendar day, can take, can take time off. So there's only two shifts open for the, the nine shifts that would be in a calendar day. So there are certain times where even though, say, two people have taken vacation days, that someone also could call out sick. So that creates three vacancies and so on and so forth. So right now I am short a couple of people. So that, but that again, right now that's only going to be for this last part of the fiscal year, which my budget can cover this. So I, I don't anticipate, and I haven't yet going, I haven't gone close to the number in my overtime budget, thankfully, again, because of my grants.
Great, thank you.
I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Counselor Bean.
Yep, just two seconds. Just wanted to say thank you. Obviously this is a budget hearing. So it is a little related in the sense of money that we'll be saving on the regionalization of stuff. But I also will tell you that I will be the first one to say, because it'll be a lot of politicians right here taking, you know, trying to say they had something to do with it, and that's not true. It was you who put this together. So I really appreciate that work. And although we, you know, we might make a couple of call here or there to, you know, to keep it on track. But in the end, that's, it's your work and yours alone. So I really appreciate that stuff.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Comments? I too would like to commend you and your staff. I know you jumped into the Southwick deal kind of late. They were already looking at Chicopee. So for you to pull that off, I'm, I'm impressed and thank you. And I know that the people who were on the commission previous are happy to see this come to fruition as well as Counselor Flaherty. So there's a lot of happy people if this, if you pull this rabbit out of the hat. So I thank you again. Any other questions?
With that, Mr. President Pro Temp, I move approval of the Public Safety Communications budget as presented.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call Madam City Clerk.
Adams.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Bellchandy.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Biggie.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mello.
Yes.
Morganelli.
Yep, no, no.
Oniski.
Maybe.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you and keep up the good work. We appreciate everything and relate to your staff. Thank you.
I will. Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going into a new area that we did not cover last year, enterprise funds. We have five of them tonight that we're going to look at. There are more than that, but we're going to look at five tonight. The first one is sewage and wastewater. That is 67004400 in the book.
Hey, this is Fran having a little technical difficulty here. Camera, sorry about that.
All right. Get your camera fixed.
Yeah. Or we'll just go without it as.
Your choice.
Yeah. Okay, so, yep, this is Fran with the DPW. I'm actually here at Sackett Street. I have two employees with me, Steve Fernandez, the Deputy of Water, and Joanna Williams, Budget Analyst for the whole department. I'd first like to say that DPW continues to be one of the go-to departments within the city. Certainly this past year was no exception. We have a large amount of dedicated employees from, you know, wastewater, water and sewage, certainly those ones we're going to talk to you about tonight. But the waste collection folks, all of those people, you know, just really kept the city running as far as I'm concerned and stepped up to the plate. So with that said, I'd like to, I'm not sure, are you going to go right in order, Mr. Chairman? Department 440, I would, would be the first one to start with.
Yeah, 440, then 4490, 45, and then 4550, sir.
Okay, so 440, sewage and wastewater treatment. The first three pages of the Munis report you have, that's for, you know, people basically salaries and such.
salaries and such, you have full time salary, full time hourly, overtime, and so on. With the full time salary, there were some contractual increases. With full time hourly, hourly, there were contractual plus step increases. Overtime is no change. And overtime is interesting to note with this department, because we are required by the state to have coverage minimum eight hours a day, and that includes Saturdays and Sundays. So that's, that's where the overtime comes into play, is our Saturdays and Sundays, for the most part, as well as on call for issues that might arise with the plant. Out of grade, there's no change there. Personal service, no change. Social Security, that's a percentage of the wages. Retirement is a figure obtained through the retirement office. Workman's comp is historical. Health insurance, there was a slight increase in that. Life insurance is historical. Severance, we're waiting for a figure from payroll. Going to have one one retiree this year for that. And purchase the services is the next item. There's increase due to actual needs of the department, maybe augmented or by undesignated funds. This year was a little bit of a misnomer, if you will, because the undesignated, you know, was decreased. Supplies had decreased due, there was a decrease in that. Gasoline, there was a decrease. Intergovernmental, there's no change in that. In-state travel is unfunded, or underfunded, no unfunded, yeah, sorry. And out of state travel is unfunded as well. And that's pretty much COVID. We, you know, there was, there wasn't any out of state travel and for conferences or anything like that. Then you go to general expenses, there's no change there. Certification, illegal, no change. Personnel development is unfunded, and INI was decreased. Buildings was decreased. Plant capital improvements decreased. Additional capital equipment, no change. Equipment vehicle decreased. No request for vehicles for this department, or this division, I should say, for this budget. Additional equipment, small equipment, no change. Replacement equipment, decrease. Maturing principal amount provided by the treasurer, these are figures that you have there. I'm just reading some of that, some of my extraneous notes. Do you have any questions on that?
Does the counselors have any questions? Counsel Matthews Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President Protep. Fran, I just was curious about the intergovernmental charges. Can you clarify what that is exactly?
Yeah, intergovernmental, then that's, that's kind of what the city charges, the revenue generating entities for indirect costs, and for, say, legal services, auditing, you know, those, there's a charge comes back personnel even there's, so there's charges that they charge us because we're revenue generating. But I will say, and to use, you know, Counsel Flaherty's words, charge back fund, the revenue generating accounts actually give back to the city in ways of they don't charge for water, they don't charge for sewage. So the city pays no, there's no department that carries a budget for that. So school department doesn't carry a budget item for water, irrigation, any of that. That's all borne by the the revenue generating departments. And it is a cost, obviously, it's money that they spend, because there's electricity, chemicals, and so on, that they, you know, they, they expend. So I think that's interesting, possibly at least having an accounting for that and say that, you know, the law, the school department might have to come in and say, you know, maybe they maybe it gets abated or whatever, but at least say, you know, you know, you use this amount of water, whatever, because it is a cost. So that's all I have. Did that answer the question?
Thank you for that. That was good. Counsel Flaherty.
Yep, thank you. And thanks, Fran, again, for good presentation. Yeah, I agree. I think detailing those services out would be helpful, so that, you know, the taxpayers and ratepayers understand how their money is being spent. That, you know, in this case, you know, as you just described, the school system is getting free water, you know, they're not getting free electricity from our electric company, and they're not getting free service Comcast. So it is nice to to detail out, so they understand the benefit of the schools, but it's being borne by the people who are paying the water bills. So that's something to track. And I also just want to mention that this department is the first one that came through, where you saw the charge back for the benefits to the city. So Fran detailed things like severance and pension and healthcare. That's what I was talking about earlier, saying that I had submitted a request for that. And tomorrow, you'll see that in the ambulance, hopefully. I'm going to be asking for the same thing to be done with the ambulance fund. It's a, you know, a separate fund. We can use ambulance funds for the benefits related to ambulance services. So I'm asking the mayor to do that this time, and take those monies and use them for other priorities in the budget that we've expressed, particularly to do with the master plan and the funding for the dams and levees and other work that is needed to be done. So I think you'll see that coming tomorrow. If not, it'll be on my motion for Thursday. But that was my intent. Just like this department, I'm going to ask for the same thing out of the ambulance fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions on sewage and wastewater? Fran, I had one question for you. Why is there a decrease in INI?
Yeah, Joanna, why don't you go ahead and explain that one?
It's a figure that Mr. Posey and Mr. Phillips had been like debating back and forth for many years. And now that Mr. Phillips is gone, and Jeff Gemelli has pretty much taken a hold of the budget with myself, we, there's nothing in writing that says any percentage of INI needs to go to new sewer extensions. And Mark could not come up with anything. So we said, you know, fiscal 21 was a challenge, and fiscal 20 was before. So there's no need for us to fully fund that amount. It should be strictly for INI, not for sewer extensions.
Right. And then, and then that money can go into our.
It goes into our budget, an affordable one in our budget.
What are some typical projects of INI funds?
Well, the infiltration and inflow that is working directly along with stormwater. And I know there's place doctors that are not correct, and we have been correcting them as the years go by. I'm not in the field to know it all.
Right. But I mean, for one, for example, would have been the one we just did down, where we relined on Broad Street and Main Street. That's a, you know, you've got a sewer main that's actually leaking groundwater, whatnot, is infiltrating into your sewage pipes. And then that has to go to the treatment plant and then be treated. So it costs.
It overflows the treatment at times as well, when there's heavy rains. So we need.
That's what that's used for.
Right. I'm just, I thought I heard you say it's for new sewer projects, and I would not like to see that. Take care of the old pipes first. So thank you very much for that clarification. Counsel Bean.
Great, thank. There's, you know, obviously, I'll be quick. There's some historic conversations about this. It's IINE, as some of the people on this council and former administration understand. And there was always that stretch on the expansion on the east side. And I'm very concerned that there's no money right now in the budget for expansion. There's capacity within the plant. And I know, with all due respect to the Ward Two Counselor, being downtown, there's, there's plenty of other areas out there that definitely need the expansion. And I know Ward Five took a bulk of that, that funding a few years back. And now we're looking for some pavement money. But so all I would say is, is that I'm very concerned that there's no expansion money, because I, the last thing I want to do is see the mayor submit, you know, a free cash, you know, free cash request to hook up a neighborhood that is really in dire need of sewers. Free cash is running out dramatically, and I think it should be built into the budget. Although it might not be an INI, IINE, or whatever you want to call it, but there should be a number within that budget, which sounds like, and Fran, tell me if I'm wrong, doesn't sound like there's any money in this budget right now, at least. And we can speak to your other budget later, but this piece, right now, there is no money for expansion, correct?
Correct. However, you could use.
The INI undesignated, when that becomes available.
Yeah, when that becomes available.
You could apply that towards extensions.
But then I would assume that that budget would suffer because you're transferring money for expansion at that point.
INI is historically, we've been using the undesignated to supplement our budget. We had a good year in fiscal 21. We didn't rely much on it. There wasn't much there. But in the future, INI always has an undesignated. And potentially, that should go to projects like it should under the Water Division, or the Sewage and Wastewater Division.
So I guess, let me rephrase this question. Is there any neighborhoods right now that we're going to expand in the new budget?
That would be an engineering question. I'm sorry, I can't answer.
Yeah, Mark would have to speak to that.
I know the answer. The answer is no. So there is no, there's no, just, I think we need to go back to the drawing board on this one and really talk about expansion. So.
Okay, and I can, I'm just, I mean, from the, the plant side of things, there is just in dire need of, you know, repairs and upgrades and pump stations and all. And that's, that has not been happening to the degree that it should. And when I say pump stations, I don't mean building a new pump station to serve, you know, a new development. I'm talking pump stations that need to be rebuilt, existing pump stations. So, but I.
The rate should reflect it, too. We've had this discussion. And, you know, I'm more, I'm more than happy to take that vote. But, you know, we just got to have a plan in front of us. And we've talked about it a few months ago. So hopefully, that'll happen down the road.
I think this is a good topic of conversation for a later date, because I think personally, if we're putting in a new line, we need to have people sign, hook up. And that hasn't always happened. So that's, that's got to be a discussion for a later date. So Counsel Flaherty, you got a second?
Yep, thank you. Yep. And I agree with Counsel Bean. I've been around a long time to and see how this game is played. I think there has to be a payback before we commit to expanding into a neighborhood. You know, it is nice to expand, but when we expand and spend a million dollars and only get a handful of people signing up, their payback is not really good. So I think that has to be part of the equation when we look at expansion. Not only, you know, a need for it technically to, you know, protect the land and resources enabled, but to make sure that the revenues are spent, you know, fiscally responsibly, and that we get a payback. We also shouldn't be taking free cash or any other city money to pay for utility expansions. Those should be paid for out of the utility budgets. The ratepayers who are in the water and sewer systems should be paying for those expansions, not the general public, that are not benefiting from this, right? There are people all over the city that don't have access to sewers, and don't have access, you know, to internet and things like that. We shouldn't be charging them in the utility, you know, in the utilities that they are getting, or the tax bills that they're getting in order to support those utilities that they can never themselves get. The other, the question specifically I had is about Southwick. Southwick has made the news lately for a bunch of expansions. How are they being charged for the sewer treatment plant? I know we just did a big capital upgrade a little bit ago. Was Southwick charged for their portion of that big capital upgrade? And how, is there a need for us to get involved in a formula with Southwick if they increase use of our facility?
They did pay for the expansion. In fact, that that's running out, I believe, in the next year coming up. But they have a block of, if you will, of capacity that's theirs for now and in the future. And it has some, you know, some increased capacity in there. So and they need to be, because the way that that was negotiated, they need to be brought into, you know, anything that might take away from capacity of the plant or, you know, affects them.
And does their rate get adjusted every year as the budget goes up based on salary and benefit increases and all that?
Yes.
Every time there's a rate increase to any of the users, their rate is adjusted as well, according to the IMA we have on file with them.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
No.
Counsel Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President Protep. And thank you, Fran, for coming in and explaining. I'm wondering, the sledge removal costs, I can't see it detailed for previous years. Can you tell me, has that been constant? Is that new? Do you expect those numbers to increase again? Where are we with that?
Believe that went up to 250,000 this year. Sledge hauling. Right. And that's obviously, sledge hauling is a product of, you know, to haul it away is is fuel and mileage and all that, because we haul every bit of that sludge out of there. So yes, I could see that going up.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
Mr. President Protep, I move approval of Sewage and Wastewater Treatments Budget as presented.
Second. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Adams?
Yes.
Alley?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandi?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Fran. The next one we're going to go is sewer, 67004490 at the back of the book.
Okay, so sewer, I mean, we're talking sewage and wastewater treatment and sewer. Now, this is the collection end of things. This is where the rubber meets the road from your house, so to speak. And, you know, same deal, you know, going, the first few pages are full time hourly. We don't have any full time salary folks in that position. And those folks here, there's some contractual increases, some step increases. Overtime remains the same. Overtime with them is, you know, call-ins, people, you know, having a sewer backup or whatever. And they need to go out and respond with that and take care of that. Out of grade remains the same. Other personal services, that's the boots, which goes into their, that we created a separate account for that to keep track of that. Social Security, that's a percentage of wages, retirement figure obtained through the retirement office, workman's comp is estimate, health insurance reduced, life insurance is an estimate, and severance, there is none. Purchases remains the same, supplies remains the same, intergovernmental charged the amount to, that's, you know, that's charged amount to a zero due to historical review, I guess. And I don't think there was any intergovernmental with that, with the sewer division. In-state travel, that's an interesting one, because you say in-state travel, and we think of conferences and whatnot. But in-state travel is easy pass and such. Out of state travel, there's no change. General expenses reduced by 1,000. Additional capital equipment, no change. Equipment and vehicles, we are hoping to purchase a pickup on for that, that, yeah, that's to 35,000. We'll buy that outright at that, that price. Additional small equipment, there's no change. And buildings.
And we have one update.
Okay. So there's an update on the severance, and that is, we are going to have retirement, I'm sorry. I hate to see him go. Yeah, so there is going to be a severance payout for one retirement in that division. And that's actually the working foreman, hardworking guy, Jim Ruffo. Buildings was decreased. Plant capital improvements decreased. Additional capital equipment, no change. Equipment and vehicles decreased. No request for 22. Did I flip a page here? Yeah. Yeah, it ended. I'm sorry, it's such a short one compared to the others. I'm.
I think you went underwater, getting a head start.
I got in a roll. Sorry about that.
It's all right. Any questions from the council? Counsel Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. President Protep. Thanks, Fran, for being here tonight. Just question about, it's a, it's a. question about, it's a, it's a small ticket item, but is it, it's line, it's just above in-state travel, I guess, line 570701. It's, is it boot reimbursement? Is that what that is?
Yes. Yes, and it's, it's part, it's contractual and they, it used to be a real nightmare figuring all that out, but they kind of came up with its own separate account. But yeah, so that's per the contract. Employees, this is a 40-hour unit and the, and the foreman are involved in that. But they, they're allowed to buy X amount of dollars worth of boots per year. And that's safety-toed shoes is what that really boils down to.
Okay, so is that, is that for about, about 10 or 12 employees? Is that right? Or?
For that one, if you're looking at that $2,400. Yeah, that's a, yeah, with a foreman, it's a little bit more than that, yeah.
So, so we're talking about 200, about $200 a year for each employee?
$300. They get to spend up to $300. We come to contract negotiations. I would love to change that. I've been really, through whatever reasons, things changed over the years, but yeah, it's, it is not in the best interest of the city to be paying $300 a year for boots up to. Not every employee takes that $300, but that's the, in the contract, it's, it's allowable because it says footwear or something to that effect up to $300. So they're being allowed to go to the $300 threshold.
Yeah, and I understand. I mean, it's steel-toed boots and whatever. It's certainly necessary equipment. It's something that they need to have.
Right, but we could.
And, and these guys aren't, you know, they're not making six figures in the city. They don't, you know. It's not like, you know, it's a small expense, but then again, like you said, I mean, you can get a good, good set of steel, a good pair of steel-toed boots for about 100, 120 bucks and if they last, I don't know if they last six months or a year, I'm not sure. But I just wanted to inquire about that. That's all.
Bottom line is safety and there's no one taking advantage of this program. It's just, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
With that, Mr. President Protep, I move approval of the sewer department's budget as presented.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
No.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next on the list is water. That is 68004500. Should be the next one in your book.
I do have water, actually. Waters?
I'm sorry, it's 68004500.
Water Division, you know, very similar. The first three pages or so of the municipal report are salary, you know, full-time salary, hourly, part-time hourly. The first two, there were increases due to contractual plus step increase, part-time hourly, there's no change there. Boards and commissions, no change, overtime slight decrease. That's generally, the overtime account is generally replenished with the, our undesignated funds. Longevity is contractual, out-of-grade, no change. Other personal services, no change, social security, salary, retirement. Figured at the retirement office and we are going to have one retirement this year. And that'll be a severance and that's in the, on the distribution side of things. Workman's comp, no change, health insurance, no change. Purchased services slightly decreased. Buildings, it's unfunded. Supplies decreased, gasoline slight decrease, intergovernmental, that's historical. In-state travel decreased and that's, again, that's easy pass and alike. Out-of-state travel unfunded, you know, we didn't do any traveling last year primarily due to COVID, obviously, and this year, you know, stuff just isn't coming online as far as conferences and such. And we actually did a, they call it a Luna Palooza, which is actually done through the New England Water Works puts it on and that's where we get a large majority. It's usually like a three-year, three-day event in Worcester. And that's where we get a lot of our continuing ed credits for our water licenses. And this year that was online as last year was as well. And we might start going with that for future to cut down on, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big savings and a lot gets done in a, in a pretty digestible price. General expenses decreased. Certifications legal, no change, buildings decreased, additional capital equipment decreased, vehicles. Water Division plans to not purchase some. Nope, sorry, we've got two leases coming up, going to two pickups. We're going to replace two pickups. But with that end, we've got rid of significant across the division. I think we sold over 10 vehicles this last time around. Some were replaced or will be replaced and some will not, just as kind of change things around, but we do get, we do get rid of things and not always replace it for one reason or another, or parlay that into a better option than the vehicle that was turned in. Additional small equipment, no change, replacement equipment increased. Construction decreased. And that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Councilor Sullivan?
Not so much on the budget. I just wondered where collections were and, you know, were we going to run into a problem like we ran into last year with these departments in terms of undesignated funds? And, and your budgets not matching the revenues collected?
Good question and we already covered part of the deficit. It's already been covered and anticipated, anticipate not having to request anything from the general fund at all. It seems like we've kind of balanced out in that regard.
Just, if I could just follow it up real quick, specifically with water, given some of the issues or at least the complaints that we had, particularly in the Ward 5 area with regards to the water bills at the end of last summer. Were those revenues during that time, did those exceed what were budgeted or anticipated?
Our collections, Councilor Sullivan, are ahead of this time last year for both water and wastewater. And we blame COVID on that because there was a period where people weren't paying their bills. Which could have been part of those high water consumption, but you may be aware, the Water Commission recently passed a new rate increase and it's a tiered structure. So it's with the owner's control of how much water they use and how much their bills will be. Some people will benefit on the lower end. They don't use a lot of water. And the ones on the higher end may seem, may realize that they have to now start conserving because their bills are going to be higher with the rate increase. We have to get down to the state, the 65 gallons per person per day dictated by the state and DEP. This is one way to share with folks their water consumption by doing the tiered structure. And we thought it was the most fair, especially to the elderly who may be a two-person household, you know, and those that truly use it are paying the brunt. So if you'd like, we can pass along the tiered structure that was passed recently with the council. Just send us an email and I'll pass along.
It is on our, on our website.
I, I've got it. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. And every year we are going to be looking at the current rates to see if they need adjustment. And this is something that's been left, I believe, in the past few years.
Okay, Councilor Flaherty?
Yep, thank you. And thanks, Councilor Sullivan, for asking that question. That was on my list too. I had a couple of people ask me about condo associations and homeowners associations who have single meters yet feed multiple dwellings. Are they going to be in the highest tier most likely, or is there some accommodation that's going to be made for those folks so that they're paying at the lower rate?
Well, if they're individually metered, it would be the same as a just a residential, that's a typical going.
No, like a condo though, or a trailer park might have one meter and 40 homes in there. And in the past, they've, because of the flat rate, they've all paid, you know, their share. But now with a tiered rate, they might have to pay significantly more per 1,000 gallons with only one meter. Is there going to be some kind of a abatement or a process for them to say, hey, we should really count as 40 individual homes rather than one large neighborhood?
I suppose that could be being looked at, but it's really, it's one master meter for the account and then it's up to the individual, you know, entity, how they, how they make their people, you know, their tenants or whatever pay for it.
Right, but that means they're always going to be paying the highest tier, which is a problem for many of those residents in the condo associations and trailer parks. They're right, their cost per gallon is going to be higher than somebody who lives on longer hill, right? And that's really not fair for those people. So they're looking for some way to fix that problem.
Understood, and that's definitely, I guess not to debate or try to figure it out tonight, we certainly, that's something that could be looked at for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Mello?
Thank you, Mr. President Protep. And thanks again, Fran. I'm wondering if you can elaborate on the construction budget. It says Toccoa Dam, 100,000. Western Ave Phase 2 and Shaker Treatment HVAC. Is that? Last year, Dave told me that we were done at Toccoa, but then there was a little bit more cleanup that happened after, but what, what's left at Toccoa and Western Ave? Can you just elaborate for me? And thank you.
Okay, well, Western Ave is, that's the phase two, that's at 750,000 that we need to, you know, we had to take a bond for, so the payment for that. Shaker Treatment Plant, there is an HVAC issue and have had it, that you've probably actually seen this a couple of times and we've had to defer on that because the funds were needed elsewhere, but that's a defective HVAC unit in the, in the filter bay. But it's kind of a funny thing there too because, because there's so much water in there, that area is actually heated by the water, the groundwater. So it's kind of a green effect, if you will. And the Toccoa Dam, I believe there is some mop-up work on that.
We're not done with that yet. There still is, still it's final approval from Tianbon and.
There, that's not, the dam itself is gone. It's just the, the kind of the tidying up of the, of the project. And there's some monitoring that is, needs to take place for a while to make sure that the, you know, re-establishment of the stream bed and, and alike. So that requires some engineering oversight.
May I follow up, Mr. President?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So, so it, the Western Ave money shouldn't be there because it was bonded? And so is that, is that number, is that 500K still? Is that like a construction if we need it money that you're putting there? Or is that really? Because if we bonded the 700,000, then do you need that 500,000? Can it go to the dam and levy? Is that somewhere that can go to other emergency things that haven't been funded?
No, because the money would only have, would have to stay within the water department. So that's even if, you know, the construction account, if you zero this right out, that 500,000 would just go back into our undesignated account. That's how that typically works.
I forget that part, yeah.
There is, you know, it'd be, now granted, like I said before, we provide a ton of services. I mean, just a real, you know, current one is the airport had an issue and the water department brought a generator up there that would cost thousands of dollars to rent. And we brought that up there and, you know, allowing them to use it just as a goodwill gesture and, you know, so those are the kind of things we do all the time. So. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilor Flaherty?
Yep, thank you. And I just want to talk a little about the bond. When there's a bond issued by any of these enterprise funds, the annual payments for those bonds have to come out of their operating. So that's why you see it recurring over years, is that we might have approved, you know, tens of millions of dollars or in this case, less than a million, but the actual annual payments on that bond have to start coming out and you'll see it over and over again in their budgets.
Any other questions? Councilor Burns?
Yeah, thank you. Evening, Joanna and Fran. Just, just one question, circle back to the tier rate here. How is it going to affect the business community? Say, you know, as you know, this council, we approved some marijuana-growing facilities like that. Is it going to affect that immensely or?
I mean, it's going to, if, you know, you look at the tiers yet, so what it was before, the, I think it's down to the 8,000 and below is kind of at what the old rate was. And then I don't have it in front of me. And then the tier, tier three, but yeah, obviously if you're a big water user, it does, it does go up. I don't have the breakdown of exactly what it, but it's, yeah.
Tianbon gave examples and reflective of how people would be affected and businesses would be affected. The high tier, there was a very low percentage of businesses that would affect that area. It is in the report.
So we do have that historical data of, you know, high water users, if you will, but, you know, percentage-wise all across the, you know, however many tens of thousands of users there are. It's a low number.
Oh, so in other words, commercial people are going to be paying more?
Yes, they will be paying more.
All right, so that's, because they pay a higher tax rate and they, you know, now we're going to increase their rates?
I hear what you're saying, but that, like our electricity rates, our operating costs aren't going down. So someone that's using 450,000 gallons of water is a significant amount of water that, you know, this is a significant demand on the system.
All right, well, you know, now, how much revenue is that, is this tiered system? Do you have any idea? Is there, did Tianbon do that? Did they show you how much revenue was going to increase, decrease or?
They did, and again, I do not have it in front of me, but the other thing you have to remember, there can be kind of an unattended consequence for doing the tiered system because you, it encourages conservation. So we could end up, you know, in a situation where we don't necessarily hit, you know, an anticipated number because people will conserve, which is a good thing. That's kind of the double-edged sword. Where the water utility is, you want to be able to sell water as a commodity and make money and, you know, be able to maintain your system and make improvements and such, but you also, you know, we're big conservationists too in the, in the water industry. And, you know, that's evident by, you know, our watersheds and all and the like. So yeah, it's kind of a funny spot to be in.
And I know we want to sell Westfield. We always talk about selling Westfield and how the rates are low. Well, if we, if we have a tiered system with the business people, you know, we're going to have to think about that also. I, I did see where there was a, I believe the, maybe the feet, the pipes going into the, you know, like inch and a half, whatever, three inches. I saw there was a tiered system on that also.
Right, but the tiered system in regards to that is the majority of those customers would be, they call it a one-inch, but it's our five-eighths meters, what the majority of. I think that's the vast majority of them fall under that. There's not a lot of the, you know, the larger size.
Okay, thank you.
And, and, you know, like has been said, we're going to review the rate every single year rather than wait till, you know, it becomes a, you know, review it each year and then make decisions to, you know, adjust as needed, a pour-down.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to have to wait long to review the, the rates because you're going to be getting, you better get some more people in on there in October when the, when the public starts calling in there. So maybe we should, I hope you got a good source to get any information out because that's what's going to happen in October.
Well, we have been, it's going out in the bill and, and I mean, I don't know whether me, what other media options you want us to use, but we all.
It's not me. I'm just saying in general.
Right.
But good job anyways. Thanks. You guys do great work down there.
Any other questions? Councilor Adams? Any other questions? Counselor Adams.
Fran, quick question for you. If we're looking to conserve water and conserve treated water, I got a question for you. Why wouldn't we be able to allow people to put a well in just to water their wants? That's conserving to me.
Well, it's conserving, but it's against the law, number one, because it's a, a huge potential backflow scenario. So if you have a well, you know, in close proximity and associated with your domestic water, there's someone just making a trip down to Home Depot and buying a couple of fittings knowingly or unknowingly has now just, you know, contaminated or potentially contaminated the city's drinking water with a pressurized system.
So this is a conversation for a later time and I, I just wanted to hear what you said, but it's not a law. And every town around us is doing it. So that's, I think we need to review.
Mass D P, that's, we're, they're the ones that tell us we can't do that.
Uh, I, I'm not sure if that's true because every town around us is doing it. So I'm not sure why we're one of the ones that can't do it. So I think again, that's, that's a later, not a conversation with the budget, but it's a conservation question for you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
I move approval of the water department budget as presented.
Sorry. Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Adams.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandy.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mellow.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Last one, Fran Stormwater. That's six eight five zero four five five zero.
That is a very short one. It, um, okay, go ahead. Do you have any questions? Because it is so short. I think it's what's up explained to her. I don't have a whole breakdown. There's no employees on that one.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, is that technically on the agenda?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I'm looking at an old agenda. Okay.
Yes, you are. There wasn't a, there was an amended agenda that added Stormwater and PEG.
My apologies.
Not a problem. It's hard for me to keep it straight.
Can you explain why we don't have employees and benefits in here when this is a revenue generating department? Seems like we should be able to cover a portion of those employees that you put in here to do the work.
I, I suppose you could do it. It would be very similar to sewer, um, you know, in that regard, obviously it would be a bigger budget. And we're able to do that with, you know, the in-house staff within the DPW. You know, Stormwater, obviously you're working in roads, so those folks work in roads. So that's how we're accomplishing, you know, the Stormwater projects or with the folks that.
But we're not charging the Stormwater rate payers for that service that they're getting from the city budget. And we have the capability to do that. So I think that's something we should be looking at.
Yeah, I mean, obviously that would be something that you guys would have to vote on. And I mean, I don't know, what do, what do they pay now? Five dollars, average citizen? It's going to be a lot more than five dollars.
Thank you.
But it is, it is reflective of the cost. Thank you.
Now, Counselor Beltrandy.
Thank you, sir. Just a question, Fran. How are we doing on this, the plan overall with the, the funds that we're getting? And what we're putting out as far as getting these repairs done?
So the, i- if you're talking about the, the ARP money, yeah, there were, we did meet and we have, um, you know, each division kind of came up with some projects, Stormwater in particular. There's, we'd like to take care of that culvert that is on City View that's failing. That's one of the projects we'd like to take care of with Stormwater. And that, that would be a huge project to get that done. That culvert's pretty much rotted completely away.
So I guess my question is this, and I brought this up before. The funds that we're collecting for this, are they being used specifically for these projects that we've been moving?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right. That was my question.
Any other questions?
With that, Mr. President, Pro temp, I move approval of the Stormwater Management Budget as presented.
Motion been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Adams.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandy.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mellow.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Fran and team. Appreciate all the work and appreciate you being with us tonight.
So we'll see you either in person or on Zoom, uh, later on in the week, I guess.
Yep, stand by for updates. It could, it could, depends on the legislature how we're going to proceed, but be prepared for either one.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Last enterprise fund for tonight is the PEG account and that's two one one zero six nine four zero. Mr. Coles. Well, we might as well start with Counselor Flaherty. You know, he's got a question.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Pro temp. And thanks, Pete. And thanks for all you and your team has done, you know, this year during COVID. I know it's not easy coordinating all these meetings and everything. I would, before I get into that budget line item, I would like to make sure that all our meetings are recorded in the future and that they're made available online on demand. I think having to ask for meetings through public record request is crazy for us. We, we as a city council should be able to get any meeting we want, anytime. If they're available, they should just be automatically popped out there onto the Vimeo site or YouTube site. Yep. Yep, I, I appreciate it, but it took a little bit of effort and we shouldn't even have to do that. It should just be a normal cost of operation. If you record it, it should be available on, on demand. So that's, that's what I think a policy should be. If you, if your department records something, it should be thrown out onto the Vimeo server or somewhere else where it's available online for the public. I think these, you know, we've talked about it for a couple of years in a row now about wiring City Hall so that we can record all of our meetings correctly. I think you have a small budget for that here. But I think as we get back in person, we want to make sure that we're not providing a lower level of services than we are now during COVID. So we want to make sure that that, uh, stuff happens fairly quickly and that either in this, at the end of this year, you know, in the next two weeks or in the coming fiscal year that we address that so that the public can see these meetings anytime. The item that you mentioned is the GNE fiber connection fee of a hundred eighty thousand dollars. It's a significant portion of these funds. It covers the city internet for things that are beyond the scope of PEG. And my understanding of the PEG law is that you can pay those things that start with P E N G. And it's about government access. It's not about providing a pipeline for the whole entire city to use for their day-to-day business operations. It's about the public's access to these things. And by having this hundred eighty thousand dollars in there, you're basically restricting what the public can do. Like over in Long Meadow, they have a TV studio that's fully funded. They have cameras that people can take out and rent, record their own things. There's a whole bunch of stuff that can happen and Springfield, the same thing. And we can't do that here because our money is being gobbled up by the city who should be paying for some of this internet service. So I'd like to see that changed. I don't know how we do it without, you know, fighting. But it, it's not fair for the purposes of a PEG to take this money and not make it available to the people. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not a question, just a comment. If you're going to start doing sports or any sports in general, you might want to look at, um, you know, the ability to, uh, you know, have businesses or other supporters pay a fee. It's, it's not simple. I don't think you can do it on government meetings. That's probably all kinds of problems. But, um, but the sports, the sports part of it can be done. But you need special accounts set up to be able to take that and a process to, uh, to basically bid it. So.
Very good. Any other questions? Again, Pete, want to thank you for, I know the tireless, tireless job you've done this year. So thank you very much. Oh, Counselor Morganelli.
Thank you, Mr. President, Pro temp. Yeah, Pete, good, good to see you. Always working hard, doing great work. And I, I don't see new microphone on the, uh, on the budget, but you, you've got a scratchy mic over there. So maybe we can do something about that. Uh, what is the, um, what is the cell phone charges for PEG? Seven hundred and fifty dollars? So it's, that's a, a city cellphone. I got you. Okay.
It's invisible.
Cause I, I mean, I, I have a two, I have a two hundred and forty dollar cellphone and, and it's got the USB. It's got the, uh, mobile hotspot.
Much more important.
Oh, I got you. Okay. Oh, had to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Mello.
Thank you, Mr. President, Pro temp. Uh, Pete, thank you very much. And can you tell us how many rooms at City Hall are ready to be able to record and stream meetings at this point if we were to return tomorrow? Is that in this budget?
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you. Thank you, President Pro temp. Uh, Peter, just, uh, thank you for the job that you do. A department of one is, it's not an easy thing to run. I mean, you're chief cook and bottle washer, but you do a great job. You, you've done yeoman's work this year handling all these meetings. And I just really appreciate all the helping and, uh, in your spirit, I mean, you're, you're always the same. You're unflappable. I didn't want too many satellites go off, but other than that, uh, you're, you're constant. You're always very pleasant to deal with. You always do a great job. So thank you.
Any other questions?
I move approval of the PEG Access and Cable Funds Budget as presented.
Motion been made and seconded. Any, any further discussion?
I would just say, since this is one of our last ones, that, uh, Counselor Matthews Kane was more efficient today than the previous person that was making the motion yesterday.
No, she just gave you more time to talk than I would have.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Adams.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Bean.
Yes.
Beltrandy.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Figgy.
Yes.
Flaherty.
No.
Harris.
Yes.
Matthews Kane.
Yes.
Mellow.
Yes.
Morganelli.
No.
Oniski.
Yes.
Sullivan.
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, our next item is, our next meeting is tomorrow at six PM. Location to be determined by the state legislature. Both the House and the Senate have passed bills. They don't agree. So now they're in conference. So hopefully they will be able to come to some form of an agreement in enough time so that we can notify people if there is a change. If they don't, don't do anything, we will be in chambers tomorrow at six. Otherwise, I don't know what else to tell you.
I can't change my private jet things that quickly. I need more time than that.
Well, you need to get a better pilot. Counselor Flaherty?
When we turn on those laptops tomorrow, what's going to happen? Are we going to have to wait through 100 years of updates? Or, Pete, did you already take care of those?
Can't be any worse than the regular meetings we've been having.
If you turn on a laptop and it restarts 20 times, it's going to be a real problem.
It's kind of like the meetings we've been having.
Yeah.
Bring your, bring your paper copies as backup. We'll do it the old fashioned way. Anything else? Counselor Harris?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Motion been made and seconded. Roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Adams?
Yes.
Ally?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Beltrandy?
Yes, and thank you, finance.
Burns?
Yes.
Figgy?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Matthews Kane?
Yes.
Mello?
Yes.
Morganelli?
Yes.
Oniski?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Till tomorrow night.